How you doing?
Doing alright, and so? I believe it's gonna be on the agenda.
Okay, I'm on my way out the door and George says to me, are you bringing the?
You're quiet.
No idea.
Can you possibly say?
And he maybe said to you already, we noticed me. So it's gotta be under $10,000 to not have. Which it is if you take out the whatever that set charts which he thinks. So, I mean, it's way under if you take that out. And he should also say, you probably have to infer the exact dimensions.
It's gonna be the one that was scoped for this.
Hey Ed. Snap your signature on that real quick, please?
Yep, yep.
Anyway, I'll leave it with you. Yeah, and he said call it during the meeting, but you know how the system works.
Okay.
Yeah, I've gotta get in touch with Newton Guard ASAP on that.
Yep, no, we got you. Not a problem. Yep, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, there was enough time out here. I don't know if they were doing so.
Yup, it's in there.
I saw Chrissy going back and forth, I saw Eric going back and forth at the van. Chrissy was in the blue guard. And.
I am. Yes, how are you?
So, I'm worried too.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and when it's public comment, we can just say that and then give me a copy of it and I'll make sure I get through that. No, no, give me that, okay?
How you doing? I'm scared to go.
New subject.
Yes.
Sometime before it gets well into summer.
Yeah.
Want to.
I'll come up and see you.
The main reason I wanna get it done is that it's the one you wanna depress.
You're kidding me, yo.
Our well gets very low.
I'll get you right. You got it. I'll stop up and see you.
Well, you have to come up without calling me because April will shoot you or something.
I'm not scared. I'll see ya. So I've got two here. I got two more? Okay. Got it.
Throw that at him. And then, just pre-use. This is the one that we just updated about the comments on the measurements. So they just need to decide, you already signed it. These are the non-public from last month, so they do not get read aloud. These are the ones, everybody has a copy of the draft, if they're approved, then can we sign this one? Right? It's 7 o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First order of business, pledge allegiance.
News flag, United States, America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Review and approve the first minutes for March 28th. Which is just that one edit and then April 11th. So you have a draft copy?
Yep.
If you approve them, this one's the one to sign.
Yeah, I already flipped over.
I'm sorry.
Oh, maybe I did.
Watch out. Thank you. That's just the copy we signed, that's all. That's just what you read here?
Just handed one back.
It was a different one. And Marty, on the sign, one of that's the original. Thank you. Alright, we all set with the minutes? I'd like to move on to. Correspondents. We have a few things. Joe, I just need you to. Tell me what that's about.
This is for the aluminum. For the steel. Let me see which it is. Who was saying about the aluminum that they had? Yeah, this is a steel, the metal dumpster.
So, what do we do with this? It just goes back to the sanitation?
Just like any other trash or some thing.
How often will we get?
It depends, because it's nothing regular, it's whenever the metal bins filled. Somebody brings a lot of stuff in, it'll be gone, it'll be a couple of weeks. So that's just random. Generally about a month or so. Sometimes.
Okay.
Double check my page, make sure I didn't write 23.
I should know pretty much who the state recommended to use. And the whole package we don't need and stuff, but we were gonna send it over to. Us put in the legal district since we got all the other work done. And let them get the other type. We got the paperwork done, we got it all set up, and we're gonna take care of the posts and the concrete and all the maintenance, getting it in.
Okay.
So we're gonna give the units to them.
So. Is that the next step?
Yeah.
Can you say that?
We're gonna turn this over to the school.
Okay.
For them to go through and debate what they're doing. We took care of everything else, we're getting the concrete put in, the poles, everything else is getting done by the town.
And we're paying for that?
Yes.
Do we have a, my question is, do we have for that, or do we have something?
It's all done by.
Oh.
And we're actually doing trading for the stuff that's around. It's being handled.
Perfect. And so, this working?
Turn over to the school.
And is that something that I do, or?
You can, you can, doesn't matter.
You can talk about it. Okay. The best way to handle it with.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's the screen design. So, the other correspondence I have today. Dear members, I would like to volunteer for the zoning board for the position of being an alternate. I would be happy to serve in any capacity for the town now that Croydon is my new home. Respectfully, Carl.
You gotta get somebody to handle it. See, he needs the official okie dokie.
So, like, again, so the select board has to make a recommendation. The planning board has to make a recommendation, both to the moderator.
Okay.
And then moderator makes the decision. It's supposed to be two people for each position, but this is not gonna happen.
Okay, okay.
So volunteer.
Yep, absolutely.
I don't know the gentleman, so I have no objections to it. I mean, depending on what his credentials are, I'm sure he's more than welcome.
So we recommend him, and now it goes to the planning board?
Yep.
Do either of you two know the car?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually losing my hood.
So do we have to officially, like? Make motion and pass it and vote, or is it just?
Make a motion, we accept it. Pass it on to the planning board.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye. What?
I don't know if that makes any difference.
We have a resignation letter from Melanie Morbidin. To Angela, accept this letter as notice of my resignation effective 4/20/23. I appreciate the opportunity you gave me and have really enjoyed working with you and getting to know you. Melanie. Attention, Croydon Town Clerk and Croydon Selectmen. I hereby submit my resignation for my position as Secretary of Cemetery Trustees and Trust Funds effective today, April 24th, 2023. Sincerely, Barbara Press. Croydon Select Board, I would like to thank the town for the opportunity to serve as health officer for the last 10 years. At this time, I will be resigning my post effective April 25th, 2023. Supplies and keys to filing cabinets have been turned in to the town clerk. Sincerely, Jan Mitchell. This is a lovely Tuesday.
Any reasoning behind any of those?
Oh, yes, sure there is a big reason. I know the Melanie Morbidin resignation was the last meeting made her uncomfortable. So I'm gonna ask. That you be a little less loud during the meetings, please. And I'm gonna ask that you be a little less passive aggressive when asking, so that we can have a. We gotta stay calm here, because people are starting to walk away, and I can't do this by myself.
I have no intention of going anywhere.
As far as Jan Mitchell and Barbara Press and potentially Jan Mitchell and Mr. Houli, we are gonna lose everybody. Because of the meeting they had the other day.
I was unable to attend. All I saw was the aftermath of it all. I don't know whether you saw the video or not.
Yep, yep.
Don't really know where to go from there.
That will move us on to the next item, which is the Board of Trustees. And I'm gonna read what I have there with me, I'm a little shaky. There's some water, of course. To the Select Board, Town of Croydon. This is to notify the Select Board that the Board of Trustees, Trust Funds and Cemeteries were unable to organize a meeting at 9:00 a.m. on April 20th, 2023. Held in the Croydon Town Hall in accordance with RSA 31:22. Therefore, there is no functioning Board of Trustees. There are several items that need to be immediately addressed by the town. The town meeting is not conducted following rules of order, but rather on the basis that we. Excuse me, the meeting was not conducted following the rules of order, but rather on the basis that we have, quote, we have always done it this way, unquote. Thus, the meeting fell into confusion and disagreement. Board member Barbara Press resigned at the meeting. Therefore, in accordance with RSA 31:22, it is incumbent upon the Select Board to appoint a replacement member. This appointment should be made at an open meeting of the Select Board, such meeting to be held at a date and time published in advance and permitting comments from citizens. Note, the Select Board does not have any authority to specify the duties of the appointee to the Board of Trustees. This responsibility lies entirely within the members of the Board of Trustees in an organizational meeting. Lacking an organizational, there was no process in which to organize future meetings of the Board of Trustees. The Select Board should appoint to the town moderator to a position of temporary chairman of the Board of Trustees until such time they organize properly. He should be tasked with calling a meeting of the Board of Trustees, such meeting being given advance notice to the citizens. Number four, are the trustees of trust funds properly bonded in accordance with RSA 41:6? Have the trust funds been audited in accordance with RSA 31:33? Trustee records have not been properly maintained in the town clerk's office as required by New Hampshire 91- A:3. A private citizen showed up at a meeting with. Apparently having been keeping records in her personal possession. The town administrative assistant needs. The town administrative assistant needs to be tasked to attend all Board of Trustee meetings and record and post minutes. The town legal counsel needs to review the procedures and actions of the Board of Trustees to ensure the actions. To ensure the activities are conducted in accordance with New Hampshire law. This is necessary to ensure that the town of Croydon is not subjected to legal action by the Office of the New Hampshire Attorney General. Note, today's meeting. Was video recorded and is available to Select Board and Town Council respectfully. So sorry. Submitted April Anderson. I did a little bit of. Delegate homework today. Hang on one second, please. Alright, I'm gonna try to answer some of these as I go, here. Number one, about the meeting not being followed by rules of order. The board does not follow rules of order. Trustees are allowed to set the terms of how their meetings are conducted. This should have been part of their organizational meeting. As far as Barbara Press's resignation, the Board of Selectmen must appoint someone to fill Barbara's vacant seat. Yes, we have to wait and we have to post notice of vacancy for the next meeting and make an appointment for the next, at the next Board of Select Board meeting. We need to stress that this needs to happen, because we have money held up right now for. And we need to get moving on that.
I agree, and I'll just something to put out there, I think we should have a, like a. An outline of what's expected of the person, because that was a big issue the last night. As far as duties that they'll be required to form.
Oh.
The open position. People are gonna ask what it entails or what goes into it, so I think we should have some sort of idea of what to tell them. For anybody who is interested.
Okay.
Or what type of background may be better suited for the position, whether it be accounting or whatnot.
As far as the town moderator, meeting should and must be noticed, the moderator should be installed overseas. Changes, I'll find out what that means. The moderator is there to moderate town meetings and election, it is not within Bruce's role to amend. Ameliorate discord amongst the trustees, he cannot be installed on the board temporarily, only the Board of Selectmen can appoint until the next election. Have the trust funds been audited in accordance with RSA 31:33? I'm able to locate the records regarding an audit of the trustees. I do have records of the town's Greek middle warrant, the only record I have of the trustee's audit was the MS10 submitted by Sue Edwards, submitted under pains of perjury. As far as having records at people's homes, public records should not be removed from town hall. Any and all records must be filed with the town clerk's office per RSA 33-A. Anyone holding any documents must present them for immediate filing. The town administrative assistant must attend and record meeting minutes. No, the town administrator is for the Board of Select Board exclusively. Her job description does not tending to the matters of the other elected officials, her both in planning and zoning board was her own choosing. Should the trustees be unable within their skill set to do something, it is incumbent them to sort out the means and manner in which they operate to satisfy their responsibility. In other words, they're their own governing body, they'd have to hire their own person. Town legal counsel. Needs to review processes. Yes, however, this does not come with a cost to the town. Legal's budget is already very high this year, the trustees should reach out to Duman and put some and set up a time in which these procedures can be audited. This should be done using the trustee funds. But this should not be done until the trustees hold an organizational meeting and a chair is named and the policies for the year moving forward are set. So we need to know what to do, because we don't have the Board of Trustees, correct?
Well, I mean, there's one or two.
Two, right now, two? Help me.
Do what?
Figure this out.
We have to put out that we need somebody, we have to post a meeting that we're gonna, gonna need to appoint somebody and go from there. I mean, we just can't say.
Oh, no, I know, I know, I just, just needed to help with this.
Yeah, no, I mean, set up a meeting, you know, when, I mean, doesn't have to be our next meeting, we can have another meeting. All you gotta do is put the date in and post it.
I think it needs to be for the next meeting now.
I mean, you can do it before then if you want, we could have one next week, you know, whatever.
When we say post. Yeah, when we post.
Two places, normally here and at the store is sufficient, but we're starting to use the website and stuff. We haven't voted to count that as posting, but, yeah.
Okay, so.
Should somebody make a motion to post the position?
We don't have to make, we don't, we have to make a motion.
Doesn't matter, I mean, can, makes everything.
Yeah, go ahead. Make a motion to post the position for trustee of trust funds and cemeteries?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Do you mind writing that up?
I'll write it up. Yeah.
Can you vote to have it put on the website too, or do we need to vote to have it on?
At some point, we may need to, I mean, if the website is working accurate and being kept up to date, we can actually vote to count it as a legitimate posting. Kim, what do you think? But I mean, you think it's good enough to where we can? Motion to, I'll make a motion to open the website up to be legitimate posted.
One second.
I can't. Okay.
So, various boards and committees have been sending me postings for meetings. And I have been expeditiously, as I get the emails, putting them on and posting them. They don't send them to me, I can't get them on there, so I think perhaps I have some type of vote to say that it could be one of the posting places would help. Have the boards and committees understand that this DJ site to have an additional posting.
That was, that's what the motion was for. The website's now able to be used.
We have to make the motion loud enough for everybody to hear, right? Is that right? He made the motion, we just need it seconded.
Make a motion to use it for an official.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so we're good with that, right?
Yep.
Alright, we're gonna see you again, website update with our lovely Kim Burke Hammer.
So, I jump into the emails, pro con emails. And then I know someone that does emails for a living. And we can utilize emails in a different fashion. What you want is you want a two-factor authentication. So you want to have people have a password that's between 12 to 14 characters.
and then have an additional authentication go to their phone. One email for each person, we can set this up to whatever company you decide to go with, doesn't have to be Proton, it could be, you know, to owners of Creighton-NH.com domain that we currently have, or these could be set up through a video we have for absolutely free, that would just cost us the administration. Having re-authification that way is the best way to keep everything more secure. The administration will come into the fact that if somebody leaves a post, resigns, then whoever is taking care of the emails, those emails will then be forwarded to that temporary account, administration or the one person. All the history and everything will be maintained by them until that email was then reassigned to the new person.
Brilliant.
Okay? So going back, I think a little bit more research into where we want to go and what names we want. And just a bit more cost-effective answers for your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Jason Rook isn't here, so we're gonna table. On Loom Lake property, our lawyer is going to, she was sending a harshly worded letter saying, make a move or we're gonna, we're, we're gonna start over again.
Basically rescind, rescind the bid?
Yeah.
Avoid the bid.
Update on the signs, Joe?
He just, he did that.
Okay. Cash Street.
Yahoo?
Yeah.
Okay. Cash Street, we're having a slight issue with the, getting the loan approved because of an opinion letter we need from the attorney. DRA neglected to let Russell know that the item, when it came up for vote, needed to be on a ballot with three fifths. They neglected to let him know that, therefore, we can't get the opinion letter. We do have an option to have a special town meeting to do it. Joe's gonna start on the culverts and stuff because that was figured in outside of the loan. The planning board has some items that need a special meeting and we may be able to hold both of them on the same day, open one, close it, open the next one to save money because it's an expensive little cost having a town special meeting. We have advertising, we have the electors need to be paid and everything else, so we're, right now, if the planning board, if we on the planning board can get everything together, speculative, speculatively around 30th of June or, or towards the end of June, as soon as we can get the papers together to have the meeting for that, we're gonna combine the two and have the vote for the road because we can't get the opinion letter without the opinion letter, we can't get the loan, and that's for any bank.
So do you want to talk to the planning board so we can get a date?
I already talked to Kim, it's all a matter of, I mean, we can set the date positive, I would just like to be able to put both of them together so that we don't have
Oh, absolutely.
Two expenses.
Yep.
But we need to get this done so we can get it on to the schedule for this year. I talked to Joe and Joe, they're in for getting it out of the way, several reasons. Inflation increases on the materials themselves waiting a year, and my personal is whatever Janet Yellen's gonna do to, in the next year, to the interest rates, because those are gonna be two major losses if we wait.
Okay. So, yeah, hi.
So the planning board will do everything that they can to adhere to whatever date you determine for the special meeting. And then that's the best that we can do to try to continue on, as you know, we've been short-staffed, so we'll do our best.
I mean, would you like to, you wanna wait till next meeting to set a definite honor, I mean, we've got to have 30, 30 days at least notice, so we'll be good for that. Next meeting, that'll give us a better idea, because we'll have a planning board meeting by then, we'll have a better idea where we're standing.
So we'll set the, the special meeting date for next meeting. Bridge part, do we receive any quote from the company item?
So we need to see it in writing.
Oh, with the additional, yes, I have that.
Okay.
Have it, all right, yep, so as soon as we get the payment, I'll, I'll need that to go with the payment, so that I can pay it.
Got it.
Okay, that was all, I just wanted to make sure we got it in writing. Okay, the front steps, I met with a contractor out front and we, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't, you can put it out to bid for a specific size. I don't think the bid that we have is accurate anymore, especially for the tracks.
I, so I haven't said anything yet, because we're just gonna go with the new spec and give them the sheet and let them go again. I have one other thing when you're finished with that.
Okay. I, I came out with my contractor, the, the, the footings are fine and the, the concrete pad at the base is long enough where we can just extend it literally one step width out, so that when you open the door, you're not stepping off the top step, right? That's what we want to do, right?
Yep.
And which is only gonna push it out one step length, and the width is fine, the railing height is too low. He did not like the idea of tracks, especially if we're gonna be getting it from Home Depot because of the location of the building, the sun, the direct sun, we have to have, the stringers have to be one foot on center and you're still gonna have a wave, and they're having mold issues with it. He doesn't like the product and said it's gonna be four times as expensive as pressure treated, so.
I agree. There's also, and this was just something that was given to me by George Chase, this is a rough estimate of cost on granite, something that he checked on. The specs aren't, the specs aren't quite length and width, but that's ballpark what it would cost us.
And Joe had an idea about, he would like to contact Weed and have them check on doing a pre-cast setup, the whole thing.
Okay.
As they'll come out and say, Weed.
Joe.
Joe, Joe Bolio.
Right.
Weed Concrete, yeah, and have them, you know, take measurements, look at it and do, uh, give us price on pre-cast.
Okay.
He said they would even set it.
So are we, are we opening it up to out-of-town bids then? Or, I, I should say out-of-town contractors, if Weed's gonna take it?
I'm just, I'm just relaying a, a suggestion.
That's concrete, I think that's a good, I mean, why not have an option, right, for the concrete? But if we have townspeople willing to, to bid this and wanna build it, why not?
No, that's, the initial point of this going out, I was told, was to keep the business in town.
Yes.
To stick with a local contractor. Weed is not a local contract, that's the only reason why I asked, but I asked if we were opening it up to out-of-town contractors, that's all.
I don't think it will hurt to have
Okay.
Two options.
I, I have no problem with it.
And do you have the people that wanna put bids on it?
Um, actually, Dicky. Dicky, Richard Bolio decided that, or not decided, but it, it, he is filled up at this point.
Okay.
But Gary Quimby, I can still reach out to and get a quote on it as soon as we get a scope of work.
Okay. So I guess we figure out the scope of work, because I know the materials, I don't know how to do the plan and I don't know what that, if it used to be, you know, specs or?
I think I need, well, if you're, that was what was requested, the scope of work with specs, as far as type of P, what width of PT you're working with, whether you're doing two by 10, two by 12, two by eight construction, whether you had a two by 12 stringer. All of that comes into, and I mean, if you're doing a 12, 12-inch on center for tracks, that's not gonna be the same, you can go with a 16 on center for PT. You don't need to do 12 inches on center, so that's gonna drop your material cost by widening it out.
Right.
So it all depends on what you wanna do, if you wanna go with, if tracks is out and pressure treated is a viable option, concrete's a viable option as well, but if we're gonna go with any type of PT constructions, we just have to have some sort of scope of work as to what we want, you know, deck height, because they're gonna wanna know. People aren't gonna wanna be liable for things that weren't specified at the time.
Okay, so I will go back to my contractor friend and ask him to, to write those specs.
That would be fantastic.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
And I'll ask Joe to ask Weed for a price for the concrete, Joe Bolio.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's to the new specs, so we're, it would be to, it would be like a, a step wider
Yeah.
And same width.
Yes.
Okay. Yep, okay.
And I'm gonna ask this, the budget one, we'll just work on, right, because I don't have a new one.
Oh, there it is. There should have been one there, I apologize.
Oh, you're fine. That was.
It is piled, I apologize.
You're fine.
So, yeah, on that one, there were a couple of things that I just highlighted to just keep an eye on.
It looks like just the legalists, right?
Yeah, and this was in that pile too. Regarding the legal.
Yeah, and that's why we're gonna shut that down.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't wanna keep doing that.
Yep.
So I'm just waiting to hear from her.
Okay.
Okay. Do you guys have anything else? Ed?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks.
Public forum time, does anybody else have anything? Anybody have anything you wanna say?
Can you, I'm just gonna hear first.
Yes. I know your, I know your name, but state your name.
Hi, everybody, open state representative. So two things, just following up on the steps, is the idea of renting stuff being considered or discussed or where is that at?
This, this rough number is 10,500, just for the
Left, if you take out the, what is it, 1,300, I think?
The delivery and set fees. But it would also, that, that's, that's the delivery and set fees, but it would also change slightly just because of the dimension changes. The five feet isn't too far off, but as of right now, it's, that would only be a foot further out. Yes, I think we were shooting for two feet, correct? Roughly.
Well, like with hers, that was just something we shot out there, but like what her contractor said was one step width, so that's actually only gonna be about 18 inches till you get the
Well, that would, that would also be utili, yeah, utilizing the same footings as well, that would be not pouring any footings for that.
We won't have to, he, he explained how it can be built without having to move the footings.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Yep. I don't know, I
Do you want to send the exact measurements, specs for a accurate quote?
I don't see the harm in getting a quote for it, whether it's above what we choose to budget or not, we can rule that then.
You wanna do that then?
I'll take care of that, yep.
I would just note the difference between rent and everything else is that rent will be there forever.
Yeah.
Unrelated to that, just as a public comment, I just wanted to briefly update everybody on some of my work at the State House. So the very concise, quick education committee has been a very significant workload, it's a committee at the House. We have now had a process, which is when bills go from the House to the Senate, from the Senate to the House, and then we just hopefully come back together and we'll see where everything is at. I have also been appointed recently to the House Special Committee on Housing, which is bipartisan committee that's looking at what ways might the state improve the situation throughout the state, and I would say in Sullivan County certainly. A number of the towns, their models especially, really lack of adequate affordable housing, so we have four, close to day one meetings and presentations from a lot of different perspectives and people involved in housing and now we're starting to see what kind of proposals might be made. So anybody who has the interest in housing, adequacy of housing, both affordable and also generally more housing purpose who need that, please feel free to reach out to me and give input, and the same for anything else that I could be helpful with, so thank you.
Thanks, Hope.
Kathy Pachke, I just wanted the official town website, everything I have looks old and not updated.
Kit, what, what is it exactly?
That would be Creighton-NH.com.
Okay.
Creighton-NH.com, yes, ma'am.
So I'm only seeing my meeting minutes from 20
I don't have meeting minutes, Kathy, I have only posted the meetings that are coming in.
Okay.
So if you'd like to be a volunteer, I can help you.
Now I do not, absolutely not, so. So they have the official website and so if meetings are, they're, they should be posted here.
It, it's a work in process, we're, we're working on this.
Just checking, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, to that point, where it comes from, there's a lot of Freud websites that aren't, and that's hard, I really, this is really it, from inside a date, I'm kinda confused with the issue too. I haven't been meeting in a while, so my dated incorrect dated, please forgive, feel free to point out. It is my understanding, this word has a plate, gone on a bit of a policy frenzy. And particularly of interest to me is something regarding making homeowners pay for the use of town halls, is that correct?
This is the table.
It is not, that is not correct.
Good, okay, could you please verify that? What is happening, you said, you said at the table, what's going on? Right, right, thank you.
We're, Ed has brought to the table that we wanna have a policy in place for insurance to make sure that anybody that uses the building is, is safe. And if we do that, then we have to raise the fee and what we're gonna charge and who we're gonna charge, so there's, we have to work on it, we're not working on it until July. And no, it's, the, the point of it is not to charge someone and not the other person, it's to set
I'll, I'll reserve judgment on that till I see what you guys do. Based on previous meetings that have taken place in this building regarding this topic of homes, or particularly targeted, I would strongly suggest against that. The euphoria from last year will die out as homeowners, by property tax, will wonder why we might punish people who say how $19.9,000 per student, depending on what age that student is, so. If that's in anybody's mind, urgent. The other thing I'd like to point out, just as a more broad for something I brought up, is, please don't get too fond of policy, okay? Policy is not leadership, it is not a substitute for leadership. Policy is what bureaucrats hide behind to mask bad decisions. Policy is what bureaucrats hide behind to mask bad decisions. Okay, it is not the way to operate, it is not leadership. Look at the great leaders in history, they're not policy makers, they never were, they never will be. So whatever you guys choose to do, choose to pursue, and in any edition really, uh, policy is more choice. School board is making a mistake and they're going to pay dearly for it, but I am, I'm happy to say that to them, so. Uh, that's why I want to say, I'm glad to hear that you have a night about that, yeah, you say you're going to get it in July, is that what you said?
We've tabled it until the end of the school year.
Okay.
To allow everybody to use it the way they've been using it, and then we've got to figure it out.
Okay.
And I'd also like to point out that it's not just, it's not a private school, public school, home school, any group. It's a town hall facility use policy. Every town, just about every town, if not every town in New Hampshire has.
I understand that, but that masks a lot of discussion which took place earlier, which was very targeted.
There was nothing masked, it was on video, it was videotaped.
Yes, and, and it's videotaped, I know it had a couple times where it died. But if, if it's there, it will also show homeschoolers in particular are targeted.
I don't know if that would be true, but that, if that's what you think, that's fine.
Go to YouTube.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? John Anderson. John Anderson.
John Anderson. I'm sorry, I'm a Tony, but you were saying tonight, so I'm not sure at this point I'm not speaking at the right. We need to do something about acoustics or something. Anyway, I'm just planning on making some remarks at this meeting. I was going to read them, but if you look at me, you can see I have no, I just came out of, I served a few minutes ago and I cannot read. So I would like your permission to give you each copies of the remarks that I have planned to make and include them in the minutes if you would.
Okay.
If, if that's possible.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
So. Can I ask then, Bruce Jasper, if John's comments are going to be part of this meeting? And John can't read them, I don't, is there somebody else that, if John's going to give them to you, can somebody else read them so the rest of us know what those comments are? We're not going to be able to, no, if he was able to read, he would have read it all.
John, do you have a problem with, sorry, this is.
I, I volunteer right now. If you.
It's, it's got a, it's all to you.
Well, I will read the sound clips at the end of last year. I'll just do the reading. And I.
Is. Are you okay with that, Amy?
Yeah, I just, she has to say who she is when she starts.
I just, and one follow up, I, I agree with John. The acoustics in here are terrible. Amy, I know you were trying to close the microphone, most of the time we could hear you, but it, sometimes we have the conversation with Melissa, and we couldn't hear anything. Joe, one point you got close to the microphone and you talked backwards, Amy, we can't hear anything because you're not closest, close enough to the microphone. And Ed, you kind of this way, so even if the microphone's not picking up what you're saying, we could, I think you're allowed to, so we can hear most of what you're saying. I'm sitting in the front row here and I missed probably seventy-five percent of what was going on. And I'm sure, fairly sure, the people in the back, I know there was one comment at one point, asked if everybody could speak up because you couldn't hear what was going on. Then there are other conversations sometimes that are going on between people here, which make it worse.
I acknowledge that and I'll do what I can to make sure everybody can hear what I'm saying.
Did you say your name? Say your name, please.
So my name is Amanda Craft, I'm actually going forward multiple times since I was asked to come and just give my overview. But I'm just simply going to read this. So as the members of the board are well aware, funds in the trust of the Board of Trustees matters amount to several million dollars. State law is very clear, the records of transactions of these funds are required to be maintained with the town clerk's office, available for viewing by the public. However, these records are not in town clerk's office and apparently have not been for several years, but rather in the personal possession of certain trustees. In my mind, it raises a question, what are they hiding? I strongly suggest that a member of this board now tonight make a motion to bring in the office of the New Hampshire Attorney General to investigate, to determine if there's nefarious activity and to ensure that new members of the board are not suspected of being listed. Further, I suggest that you demand that the records of trust funds be returned to the custody of the town clerk no later than closing tomorrow, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. And if not, then rule that any further activity of the Board of Trustees is suspended until this is resolved. Let's have fun with what is going on on here. Now I'm even nervous. I did not read this. Let me add that I am not aware of any invisible creation of trust funds, however, several red flags suggest. John Anderson, Gordon, New Hampshire citizen.
Thank you.
See you. Kathy Pesky?
Yes.
The funds are listed in the book every year. Since I've been here, which has been about sixteen years, the funds increased from one point two million to two point four million. I don't think there's anything nefarious going on. They've done a great job of making money in the funds.
Um, and I, I misspoke earlier there, um, Chrissy does think that the audit did happen, she's going to follow up ASAP for that.
Yeah. I'm not, as, as the late read for me, I'm not suggesting anything going illegally with the funds. That's not my point. What I'm saying is the records of the trust funds are required to be held in this office in here for anybody to come in and look at whenever they want. The records are not in that office unless they work, I also saw a few hours of both before, for all time. All that.
I'm pretty sure the records are there. Didn't, you saw the records, April? Did you come in, did you come in later and see the records?
Yeah. All I'm asking is that the records be where they belong.
What, what records does somebody have in their hand? That's what I want to know. So there must have been a specific document in someone's hand, and that's what this issue is. Who had this document in their hand?
I'm not sure what you mean by a document. I'm talking about a large of records of the transactions of the trust funds. They are required to be in this office.
Well, you're saying someone had records outside of the office. Is that what you're saying?
Those records are not in the office where they belong, they're in someone else's hands. That's all I, that's all.
Can I, can I just ask for clarification? Are we talking about the book that was in Sue's possession, the book that was in the video? I, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out what, what portfolio, book or folder we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay.
So are those records not kept here at town hall?
We're going to, we're going to let Steve Mitchell. He's, he's right behind John, here.
Thank you, John.
The records are about forty feet away in the office.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me just follow up on this, because I, I watched the trustee meeting the other day. Unless, and I don't know, unless Susan had those financial records. The secretary's records, as I understand it, are here. I think we're talking about financial records. And unless Susan made, I don't know, maybe they were in this office, she got them in a bag and brought them into the meeting. And then near the end of the meeting, when it was questioned about who was secretary and who's the keeper and all of this, Susan took those out of the bag, put them on the table and walked out. So I think those are the records that, that John was talking about. These are the records I saw.
That's what I'm presuming.
I don't know why you all look at me like I'm.
All right. So, can I just say, all right, so I do agree that if the records are up for public viewing at any point in time, that they probably should be kept here in town hall. I can agree. I, I understand that. That's, I can acknowledge that. I don't know anything else that if they ever need to leave. But, um, I definitely think they need to be kept on hand for anybody that needs or chooses to look them over.
The Board of Selectmen's duty in this is to appoint a member, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to set a special, we're going to, next, we're going to post it. And then appoint somebody at the next. At the next meeting. That's what we're going to do, period. That's all we have to do. That's our job. Yes.
I just want to suggest that the posting might specify the qualifications that would be appropriate for that position, because it seems that part of the problem is that there needs to be a person with bookkeeping expertise as one of the trustees. And I, correct me if I'm misspeaking, please. I don't think either of the two current trustees are intending to be appropriate for a person, so it's not just appointing a person, it's appointing qualified person for it.
Correct.
Avoid.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Not being polite, disagree with my. The, um, the position of bookkeeper of the trust, as I understand it, and I spent quite a good time on the R S A recently. The New Hampshire Municipal Association strongly suggests that small towns like this use, I know because they assess that they trust back to do the, do the duties of the bookkeeper. You still, you still appoint. Keeper, that bookkeeper's duties are delegated out to someone who really knows what they're doing professionally. They do. The New Hampshire Municipal Association recommends that, so I don't think it makes personally any sense to try and find a person that you're looking for and specify that they must be qualified to be a bookkeeper, because it's not necessary. And if you read the RSA, it clearly states that the order of trustees has the responsibility of electing the duties of each person on that board. I think you'd be stepping a little out of bounds personally if you tried to appoint someone who has specific qualities where a position is limited for a trustees. It's just happened to be my opinion. Thank you.
Susan Edwards, I would like to speak to the matter of appointing a, and having trustees appointed outside a firm to manage the money. If that is done, there will be an administrative fee charged to, against the assets, which could be one, two, three percent of the gross amount every year. And as a minimum, once you place that with, and, and if a firm manages money, it's a five here minimum. So feel free to do the math. I'm not going to sit here and do it in my head. But if they charge three percent a year for five years, um, two and a half million dollars, that's a whole lot more than the bookkeeper was getting paid at four hundred dollars a year.
It's all right. So I'm going to disagree with John a little bit. I think what the board is going to do is appoint a trustee, period. Now, that board member, in light of apparently what you're hearing from the trustees, may well need to be somebody or should be somebody who has some financial expertise. If you can find that person to appoint it, you're the board, you appoint that person to the Board of Trustees, and it's, it sounds like maybe that's where they're lacking. And whether, whether the board decides then, and that's strictly a board decision, to hire somebody else. If you can't find somebody with financial abilities and, and appoint me. Some, somebody like me, okay, who has maybe a little bit of financial knowledge, not enough to do two point seven million dollars. Then I think it's up to the trustees, Susan says, to hire somebody or to consult with somebody, but that's, that's a board, that's their word. That's not, I don't think that's your responsibility. You just need to find somebody to fill that position.
Our one job.
And if you can find somebody that's got some financial ability, that's great. If not, then the trustees problem.
So. The way I look at it, we are, we're already over on legal, we're, inflation is horrendous. And now we're, the cash street issue happening, correct? The bridge money being in the air somewhere, floating around, can't use it, right? I want to get stuff done. And all of this extra stuff being thrown at me is not helping. I can't do all of this. I'm not calling an attorney general for this situation. Our job as the select board is to appoint a member. The, the Board of Trustees are a body in themselves. If they want a Melissa, they have to hire one. We cannot spend a boatload of money on all this stuff when I'm going to be faced with telling all of you that your taxes are going up next year. Because inflation is horrendous. So we all need to calm down. And the only thing I'm going to do is in two weeks, appoint a member, and then we're going to get our act together and work together as a town.
Kathy Pesky, I just wanted to say that John's suggestion would cost the town three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That could fix the street. Let's pay someone four hundred dollars a year.
Um, I have one, I have one thing that I have to read here. Message from the town clerk. We have yet to start processing P eight twenty-eight inventory sheets for properties, but we begin to do so very shortly. Please stop by the office if you're unsure of the status of your inventory sheet. No inventory sheet must be completed for every property that you own in town. Tomorrow is the last day for dog licenses are due. Avoid costly fees by stopping by in the town office to settle with us before we begin the process of civil forfeitures. If you do not have vaccine information on hand, come to the office, contact that directly. If your dog has passed in the last year, please inform our office so that we remove them from our records. According to our records, there are a hundred and eighteen dogs still unregistered. I'm making motion, reiterating.
Second, ma'am.
Hold on.
Hey, Andrew.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about your word.
I'm sorry, say that again.